Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners for November 19th, 2025. Today, we have a veteran, Jim Casella, who is a member of the Northeast Detachment and Museum of the United States Marine Corps League here in Scranton, Pennsylvania. Jim served six and a half years in the United States Marine Corps from 1975 to 1981, three years at Camp Lugeen, North Carolina, and three and a half years at Kanyo Bay, Hawaii, and discharged a Lance Corporal in 1981. Jim currently lives in Southside, Scranton, Pennsylvania. I would like to thank him for his service, and he will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim Semper Fi.
Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Please come to the podium, state your name and municipality for the record. To ensure we maintain an orderly and efficient meeting, we ask that all comments and questions remain limited to agenda items only.
Good morning. Michelle Tierney, Glenburn Township. My comments are on the very first ordinance, first reading. I understand this to be about a millage change, so I'm going to just make a couple comments on the reassessment. Whatever the outcome of the reassessment, I want to commend our county commissioners for their perseverance, their strength, their commitment to supporting the people that they serve. It's been a long year trying to understand reassessment, trying to work through it, and I want to commend all three commissioners in working to serve the people in your best interest of what you believe was the decisions that needed to be made for this certification deadline. So again, all three of you, I commend you for your hard work and your perseverance, because it's not easy to make very difficult decisions that all community members are affected by, most specifically levying our taxes. I know it was very difficult. I know it's been a very hard road, but I commend you for your perseverance and working hard as a team. And now that that's over, we, the people, expect you guys to continue to work and respect each other and serve us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ordinance, first reading.
Ordinance 301, this is the first reading of the annual budget of the County of Lackawanna for the year of 2026. An ordinance in the County of Lackawanna and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania fixing the tax rate and enacting the budget for the year 2026 and appropriate specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the county government here and after set forth during the current fiscal year, be it ordained and enacted and hereby resolved and enacted by the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, Section 1. The tax be and the same is hereby levied on all property within said county subject to taxation for county purposes for the fiscal year 2026 as follows. Tax rate, for general county purposes, the new sum of 4.48 mils, formerly 69.67 mils on each dollar assessed valuation of this, or the sum of 44.8 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation for debt purposes. The new sum of 1.03 mils, formerly 15.99 mils on each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of 10.3 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For purposes of the county library system, the sum of .20 mils, formerly 3.07 mils of each dollar assessed valuation, or the sum of 2.0 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. For the purposes of the cultural and education fund, the sum, the new sum, of .08 mils, formerly 1.25 mils, or the sum of .80 cents on each $100 of assessed valuation. The total millage for all purposes is this new sum of 5.79 mils, formerly 89.98 mils. In Section 2, all prior ordinances or resolutions or parts thereof inconsistent herewith are repealed. Commissioners, this is the first reading of the 2026 budget. And here to explain or talk about and comment on the new millage system is our Chief Financial Officer, Mr. David Bolzoni.
Good morning, Commissioners. A few comments. So assessed valuation pre-certification was $1,591,685,381. Post-certification assessed valuation of $24,837,033,715. So this change translates into what would be considered an inverse relationship with millage. So your assessed valuation goes up, your millage goes down. So prior total millage was 89.98, adjusted millage total 5.79, or a change factor of about 15.5. In order to keep millage understandable, we continued to use two decimal places. Because of the change factor, difference of 15 and a half, to get the adjusted revenue exact, we would have had to use four or five decimal places, which would have been confusing. So using two decimal places, just an adjustment of 1/100 of a mil could have resulted in a difference of several hundred thousand dollars. So with the conversion, you want to keep the revenue numbers close. Obviously, that's the intent of the entire process. So using two decimal places, there were some deviations in the conversion. We also used a slightly more conservative collection rate for greater accuracy. So total real estate tax revenue at 89.98 mils, that's pre-certification, was $129,929,048. Adjusted revenue, total revenue at 5.79 mils is $129,914,725, or a difference of only negative $14,323. That's in total real estate tax revenue. It's about as close as you're going to get it with two decimal places. There's some variation within the components of total millage. So general fund millage, again, pre-certification, 69.67 mils equated to $100,601,876. At 4.48 mils, it equates to $100,521,238, or a difference of negative $80,638. And again, we ran it using a difference of 1/100 of a mil. The change is at least $200,000. So you try and get it as close as you can using two decimal places. Debt service millage at 15.99 mils, again, pre-certification, $23,089,192. Adjusted at 1.03 mils, $23,110,910, or a difference of positive $21,718. Arts and culture millage at 1.25 mils, again, pre-certification, $1,804,971. Adjusted at 1/100 of a mil, $1,795,022, or a difference of negative $9,949. And finally, library at 3.07 mils, total revenue, again, pre-adjustment, $4,433,009. Adjusted at .20 mil, $4,487,555, or a difference of positive $54,546. Again, the total difference is really negligible. It's a rounding error, negative $14,323. But we thought it was certainly more valuable in terms of understanding to use two decimal places as to extending it out. So that's the result of how the revenue and millage translated from pre-certification into the numbers in post-certification.
Everybody got that?
Thank you, Dave. Do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
No. This is the first reading.
Oh, the first reading, sorry.
Second reading, I believe it's December 3rd. It was supposed to be.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the-
I just have a few comments on the budget, if I might. I just want to thank Dave Bolzoni and Mary Jo Granahan. This has been a long process over the last couple of months for all their hard work, everybody in the finance office for all that they've done with the budget presentation. So I just want to emphasize to everybody in this room and everybody in Lackawanna County that this budget is not only about 2026, but it's about the long-term health of Lackawanna County's government. I'd like everybody to take a second and consider the big picture that this budget reflects. Our goal is to achieve financial stability, predictability, and sustainability while maintaining crucial public services, often for our most vulnerable, youngest, and oldest citizens, and ensuring that the county continues to play a major role in economic development, job creation, and improving the local quality of life. This budget, this 2026 preliminary budget, maintains the county's commitments while moving us steadfastly towards stability, sustainability, and predictability. Now, I think we all in this room want to focus on the future, and we want to look towards the future, but that does require a bit of context regarding the past and present. As everybody here, I'm sure, is well aware, I was presented with an unfolding financial disaster upon taking office in January 2024 as a first-term commissioner. That included $19 million in unpaid bills, a budget that purported to pay 13 months' worth of expenses with 12 months' worth of revenue, and a projected budget deficit of $37 million. Now, put that in context for a minute. The county last year was about as close to being insolvent as you can get. We weren't paying bills on time. There were vendors my first couple weeks in office ringing my phone off the hook, where's our money? We had just chaos here last year, and the county was really at, almost, I would consider it to be at rock bottom. So one of the first things we did last year was identify all of the major issues, and there were a lot of them, and move quickly to rectify them. We asked for outside, independent financial expertise, and then we listened to them. The PFM Group, the financial experts that we hired and that the State Department of Community and Economic Development so graciously paid for, laid out an unvarnished assessment of the county's cash position and structural deficit and the steps necessary to put us back on a sustainable path. Those recommendations were not easy, and they certainly were not popular. They required us to tighten our belts, freeze discretionary hiring and spending at key moments in 2024, and prioritize core services. But they also gave us a plan, a roadmap out of crisis that we have followed step by step. And if you go up into my office, on my desk is the plan, and it's a binder that's about this thick, and there are roughly 47 recommendations from PFM, both on the financial outlook of the county and on the structural, operational outlook of the county. And I'm proud to say that we have checked off a lot of those boxes, and a lot of those reforms are currently underway. So the fact that we can present a balanced preliminary budget that does not raise taxes demonstrates that the hard work we put in and the incredibly difficult decisions we have made, including last year's tax increase, and let me just spend two seconds on that. I have been tarred and feathered over the 33% tax increase. People are trying to hang it around my neck like a noose, but I will say this: I knew when I got involved in public service over 10 years ago that when you find yourself in a bad situation, you don't hide under the desk. You get up, you tell the truth, you tell people what's going on, and then you lead, and you have to make difficult decisions. Nobody, no public official, no public servant wants to come into office and raise taxes 33%. Certainly was not on my bingo card, because, don't forget, I'm raising my own taxes. However, if we had not raised taxes last year, we wouldn't be in the position that we're in today. In fact, I don't know what position we'd be in, because for years, the county spent more than they brought in. Now, remember, last year, we didn't just raise taxes. I didn't just come in here and say the only solution is to raise taxes. We cut 90 positions, we cut an entire department, we made changes to healthcare. I could go on and on and on about the structural reforms that we made. This year, we are reaping the benefits of good financial sense and doing things the right way. So my purpose in saying that is, you know, we find ourselves here today with a budget that we could present to you with no tax increase, but it just doesn't happen by accident. It doesn't happen because, you know, magic comes out of the sky. There's hard work that has to be done and difficult decisions that have to be made. It's the product of a solid plan, honest accounting, and the hard work of county staff, who I really appreciate, who tightened spending, found savings, and kept essential services up and running. Today, I am certainly not celebrating at all. I'm not celebrating. What I am saying is, we should acknowledge the progress that has been made. The county is now on stable ground. It's not just about revenue. For example, structural reforms to our healthcare administration last year have resulted in next year's originally projected healthcare increase of 9%. And remember, healthcare is going up all over the country, double digits. Our healthcare increase that we originally thought was going to be 9% was reduced to half of that, 4.5%. That's an enormous savings that goes to the baseline, so that future increases will be a percentage of a smaller number. Again, it doesn't happen by accident. It happens because of difficult, difficult decisions that we made last year. Likewise, everybody talks about overtime, and it's always a big issue. So what did we do? Last year, we sat down with the warden, and to his credit and to the credit of the staff at the prison, we identified that overtime was an issue. We were spending way too much money on overtime. They have slashed overtime by well over $1 million. We are on track now to spend far less than we ever did in overtime at the prison. Again, doesn't happen by accident. It happens because we came in, we set a plan, and we delivered on that plan. Those are just a few examples of the improved financial stewardship. But I also want to take a moment and emphasize that we had achieved those reforms without sacrificing county operations or progress. There's a lot of examples, but I want to focus on one. We have produced a truly extraordinary turnaround of the Office of Youth and Family Services, which was in disarray when this administration began back in 2024. OIFs had a provisional state license, so they had their full license taken away, a massive case backlog of over 1,000, scores of vacant positions, and as a result, unfortunately, rock-bottom morale. Today, the state license, the full state license, has been restored, the case backlog has been slashed from well over 1,000 to under 100. Now, when I say case backlog, I mean these are cases that had been built up, not through any fault of any of the caseworkers or anyone in OIFs, but because there was only 12 caseworkers to cover an entire county for all the problems that we have with families and children. Over 1,000 cases that didn't get the attention that they deserve. That backlog is under 100, and now, we don't have 12 caseworkers, we have over 50. Over 50 caseworkers in our Office of Youth and Family Services, and I have had county commissioners in the last few months call me, shockingly, and say, "We need your help." You need my help? Yes, we need your help because we want to know how you guys did it. I'm not patting myself on the back. I have to pat everybody in that agency that did the work, that stuck with it, and that I call them angels on earth, because the situations they have to walk into are unbelievable. And that also goes for the Area Agency on Aging and all the other people that do God's work in this building. So the license has been restored, and we are back in action. We also launched the first-of-its-kind Community Pathways Project to help vulnerable children and families get the help that they need to thrive before they become subject to the child welfare system. So if you remember, we eliminated the Department of Health, because we did an analysis that showed that we would be paying a lot more than we should. So what did we do? We took those resources and we dumped them into the Office of Youth and Family Services. We today in Lackawanna County are the first county in Pennsylvania to be approved for a first-of-its-kind Community Pathways Program. Now, that's not only good for the children and the families in Lackawanna County. That's going to save us money, because those children and those families who don't enter our building and our child welfare system, if we can prevent them from coming in here, that's going to save us money, and it's going to save them a whole lot of trouble. The county has partnered with the Chamber of Commerce to promote high-tech entrepreneurship. We have continued to provide business improvement grants to help small businesses grow and prosper. We have helped businesses and civic organizations to secure millions of dollars in state and federal grants to improve their facilities and operations. And our Department of Economic Development, of which I'm very proud of, implemented a program that prevented evictions of 70 families from their apartments, helping those tenants and their landlords deal with economic crisis, and they just won a few weeks ago a statewide award for that effort. Our Parks Department has improved the physical condition of our parks while introducing an array of new programs and outdoor opportunities, including completing the beautiful North Pocono Trail in Elmhurst Township, and there's much more to come in 2026 and beyond. In terms of the maintenance of our county, we've rebuilt and paved miles of county roads that have been neglected for far too long. We've made major bridge repairs and replacements, ensuring our communities are safer and better connected. And we've invested in modern equipment and smarter planning so that infrastructure work is done faster, cheaper, and built to last. And I'll give Dave Bolzoni a lot of credit for a program that started before I got here. Even though we had immense financial difficulties, Mr. Bolzoni in the last administration said, "We can't let the problems with our infrastructure go unnoticed. We can't continue to put it off. We have to rebuild the roof while the rain, or while the sun is shining." And they put together a plan that we're now implementing that is paying off all over the county. Finally, there's still a lot of challenges ahead. If you talk to, and we're going to the County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania get-together down in Hershey, and so I'll be meeting with every county commissioner in Pennsylvania, and I did so last year when they had it in Gettysburg. Every county faces challenges for a lot of different reasons. One of our big challenges within the last few months was that we didn't have a state budget, and that put a lot of strain on our social service agencies and the people that work here. Well, we have a budget now, but those problems don't go away. We are still in the early stages of recovery. We are not out of the woods yet by any stretch of the imagination, and there's going to be more difficult but necessary decisions that have to be made. What we can be confident about today is that we have stopped the free fall, we have stabilized the ship, and we can now plan forward instead of scrambling month to month. And that matters for businesses who need predictability, for families who rely on public safety and human services, and for every taxpayer who expects honest stewardship of public dollars. The preliminary 2026 budget that we put forward for a vote today, and we will do so at the next commissioners' meeting, demonstrates that the long-term structural reforms that we have embraced are beginning to improve the county's finances and operations. These results and the difficult decisions that had to be made should be a great incentive to continue those reforms, so that we don't go back to the way things used to be, and we don't find ourselves in a position where we wake up one day, because we ignored the problems and we didn't want to address them head-on, that we wake up and find ourselves having to raise taxes double digits. Nobody wants to do that, nobody. But if we pay attention, if we follow the plan, if we are honest with people, we can avoid that. There will be no scenario in which we go five, six, seven years and there's not going to be a tax increase. Not a popular thing to say, but it is the truth. And if you asked any county commissioner across the state and across the country, they would tell you the same thing. If you go 10-plus years without raising your revenue, but yet you continue to spend, you will have commissioners, and it might not be me or Commissioner Sacco or Commissioner Chirmak, in the future, who are here, who walk into a nightmare. I want to prevent that. I don't want to saddle future administrations with what I was saddled with when I came in last year. So if we continue on this path, we are going to ensure stability, predictability, and sustainability. Thank you.
Moving on to the resolutions, Resolution 25-0285.
This is approved of the current payables, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables: Lackawanna County's General Fund, numbers 392978-393807, inclusive totaling $2,29,899.41. The county's electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $4,717,403.84. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19th, 2025. Madam Chairman.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion. Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Motion is approved. Resolution 25-0277.
Authorizing the submission of the DEP grant application, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorize the submission of the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Household Hazardous Waste Reimbursement Grant Application by the Office of Environmental Sustainability, for a total of $20,634.28. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19th, 2025. Commissioners, Director Nicole Shapiro is under the weather today. This is basically a reimbursement for the hazardous waste program that she had done about two months ago, and we're waiting for the state to pay us back the application we'll go through.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion. Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Eyes have it. Resolution 25-0279.
This is entering into professional services agreement, be it resolved. The Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a professional services agreement with Northern Tier Research, 1302 Madison Avenue, Delmore, Pennsylvania, for the Lackawanna County Departments of Community Corrections and Human Resources for toxicology testing laboratory services associated with the department's testing requirements. Term commends immediately and expire December 31st, 2028. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19th, 2025. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Purchasing Director, Mr. Joseph Wexler.
Good morning. As Chief of Staff Red, I'm here today seeking approval of a three-year fixed-price contract with Northern Tier Research for toxology testing laboratory services for Lackawanna County Community Corrections and Lackawanna County Human Services Department.
Thank you. Any questions for Joe?
No, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion. Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Eyes have it. Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Resolution 25-0278.
Enter into a cooperation reimbursement agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a cooperation and reimbursement agreement by and between Lackawanna County and Meals on Wheels of NEPA, for a one-time, no-interest loan of $75,000. Adopted regularly by the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19th, 2025. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Kristin Magnata.
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Thanks, Chief. This is for Meals on Wheels of NEPA Cooperation and Reimbursement Agreement. This is a no-interest, one-time loan of $75,000 with repayment within 15 days of receipt of outstanding state funds. And as was stated earlier, this was a request of Meals on Wheels of Northeastern Pennsylvania to us due to the budget impasse and potentially running out of money before the end of the year, which means we wouldn't be able to feed our seniors. So this is a good idea for us to be able to help out a nonprofit organization in the area.
Thank you, Kristin. I agree. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution? Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, thank you for working with them. Meals on Wheels, as I think everybody is well aware, has been serving our entire area since 1969. In my research, one of the most amazing things is that in 2024 alone, this organization's Commercial Kitchen prepared 350,000 meals and delivered more than 200,000 of those meals directly into people's homes, helping to feed more than 2,000 older and disabled adults across 3,700 square miles in our region. And these aren't just meals. For a lot of people, this is their only daily connection to the community with wellness checks, socialization, and human contact built into every visit. And I know from past experience that a lot of our older adults, they look forward to somebody coming and knocking on their door with the meal. Not just because of the meal, although that's important, but because they build up a friendship with these people. So, this is an investment in dignity and in independence and in the health of our most vulnerable people throughout Lackawanna County. And again, thank you and your department for working with them.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0280.
Approving the filing of applications with the statewide local share account grant program to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development in Commonwealth of Pennsylvania for various projects as detailed. Whereas Lackawanna County is interested in promoting economic development and revitalization within Lackawanna County. And whereas Lackawanna County has submitted grant applications to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development through the statewide local share grant program on behalf of the various agencies as per attached. Whereas... And whereas Lackawanna County hereby authorizes the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners and the Chief of Staff to sign and authorize all documents and accept all any awards related to these statewide county local share account grants. And be it resolved, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners is hereby authorize the submission of these applications to the statewide local share account grant program on behalf of the above-named entities and their respective projects. Adopted regularly at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19, 2025. Commissioners, once again, here is Director Magnata.
Thank you. We have nine applications thus far for the LSA statewide program. LSA statewide closes on November 30. We receive a 2% administration fee to process applications. And this is no cost to the county. And we are required to have this resolution for our applications to be submitted.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Thank you, Kristin. Resolution 25-0287.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding with Silver Shield Incorporated. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a memorandum of understanding on behalf of the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging with Silver Shield Incorporated for a pilot scam protection initiative. Adopted regularly at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19, 2025. Commissioners here to speak upon that is the Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Ms. Sarah McDonald.
Good morning, Commissioners. Silver Shield is an anti-scam program used in conjunction with education and outreach coordinated through elder abuse task forces or elder justice multidisciplinary teams throughout Virginia, North Carolina, New York, and Pennsylvania. It is a tool which empowers older adults to protect themselves from scams and fraud through text messaging, email, or on the web. There is no app or training required. Silver Shield immediately reviews suspicious texts, emails, and messages and provides easy-to-understand personalized guidance on what to do to stay safe. It also has features that allow the user to report the message to the FTC and FBI with one click and warn family members and friends about the scam. Scams are a major issue with billions lost each year. Scams affect a wide range of age groups, often targeting older adults or socially isolated or lonely individuals. Victims are often well-educated and savvy individuals who may feel shame, but we are encouraging them to seek support and share their experiences. This MOU allows the agency to purchase 25 licenses at $45 per license for a total of $1,125. The agency will work through our Older Adult Protective Services Unit to distribute licenses to victims of emotional or financial exploitation as an effort to reduce risk and prevent further victimization. Any questions?
No, I'm good. Good. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I just, again, I want to thank you and your department for bringing this program forward. As Director McDonald said, there's far too many older adults who fall victim to increasingly sophisticated scams. I've been shocked by just the stories that I've heard from Sarah and also from our Sheriff Mark McCandrew, who I also have to thank because I feel like he has been one of the leaders in the community in notifying people when these scams are going on. So, this program is really, really simple, but it's really powerful to spot dangers and to help our elderly people stay safe. So, this is really smart and proactive, and thank you for bringing it forward.
Thanks. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0286.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby entering into a memorandum of understanding between the Pennsylvania Association of Area Agencies on Aging and the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging for the SHARE Shallow Subsidy Program. Adopted regularly at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19, 2025. Commissioners, once again, here is Director McDonald.
The SHARE Program, which stands for Shared Housing and Resource Exchange, is an affordable housing choice that brings together homeowners who want to share their home with home seekers who are looking for housing in exchange for a contribution to living expenses, help around the house, or a combination of both. Older adults, persons with disabilities, veterans, working professionals, college students, individuals at homelessness, single parents, or people simply wishing to share their lives and homes with others are eligible program participants. SHARE participants must be at least 18 years of age, with one of the individuals in the match being over 60 years old. This MOU will allow the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging to accept fair funding through the Pennsylvania Association of Area Agencies on Aging to issue rental subsidy payments to qualified, approved home hosts as an incentive to help expand this program locally. Any Lackawanna County resident who is interested in learning more about this housing program can call the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging at 570-963-6740. Any questions? Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, another great program. I used to work in a nursing home when I was in high school. And one of the things that used to kill me about working there was that you would hear from the residents, "I just want to go home. I wish I could be home." And I think that's with a lot of older people. You know, when they are at that stage in their life, they really just want to be able to live in their home and be able to afford it. And this program is outstanding. I hope that the state expands this and we can offer this to even more people. But again, thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome. Thank you, Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Resolution 25-0281.
Ratifying the submission for a grant application. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and ratify the submission of a grant application for the 2026-2029 Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Lackawanna County Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative. And does hereby authorize the Lackawanna County District Attorney to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant if awarded. Adopted regularly at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19, 2025. Commissioners here to speak upon that is the District Attorney's Director of Programming, Ms. Kim Potter.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning, Commissioners. The overall goal of the 2026-2029 Bureau of Justice Assistance Lackawanna County Community-Based Violence Intervention and Prevention Initiative Grant application is to expand and sustain a coordinated, data-driven, and trauma-informed approach to reducing community violence. The grant application also proposes to operate under the leadership of the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office and in collaboration with law enforcement, social services, and community-based partners.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Thank you. Resolution 25-0282.
This is approving an agreement for the District Attorney's Office. Be it resolved, at the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the submission and agreement between the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office and the National Alliance for Drug Endangered Children through United States Department of Justice Grant. And does hereby authorize the Lackawanna County District Attorney to accept, sign, and authorize all documents related to this grant. Adopted on a regular meeting at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on November 19, 2025. Commissioners, once again, here is Ms. Potter.
Thank you. The District Attorney in Lackawanna County created a program to address issues faced by children whose parents or caregivers struggle with drug and alcohol problems. The law partnership involves the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office and the National Alliance for Drug Endangered Children. The National Drug Endangered Children will help us by providing expert support and guidance for this project, including materials, planning, deadlines, and reports, leading meetings with the project team and advisory board, and also collecting and analyzing data to measure the project's success.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes haven't, motion is approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 25-0283.
This is approving a LURDA for the Borough of Old Forge. Resolution to fixing the boundaries of a deteriorated area within the Borough of Old Forge at a certain parcel of land located off of Howard Street and Forge Street in the Borough of Old Forge owned by Holly Ridge Estates, granting exemptions from real property taxes for the cost of new construction or improvements on said parcel, setting forth an exemption schedule for each year for 10 years, and procedure for obtaining said exemption pursuant to the Pennsylvania Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act. Whereas the General Assembly of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania passed Act 76 of 1977, known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, LURDA, authorizing local taxing authorities to grant tax exemption for certain improvements constructed on defined deteriorated properties. And whereas pursuant to an application under the Tax Increment Financing Act, TIF, the Borough of Old Forge, the Borough of Old Forge's Planning Commission adopted a resolution on August 6, 2009, which determined that a certain property consisting of approximately 23 acres of land located off of Forge Street and Howard Street is blighted area within the Borough of Old Forge in accordance with the meaning of the Urban Redevelopment Law of 1945. Whereas pursuant to LURDA and the ordinance, Lackawanna County desires to exempt for a period of 10 years the subject property situated in the county from real property taxes. Now, therefore, it is hereby enacted and resolved by the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners and hereby enacted and ordained by the authority of the laws by which the county is governed in Act 76 of 1977 and subsequently amended such legislation on July 13, 1988, known as the Local Economic Revitalization Tax Assistance Act, as follows. Number one, the Borough of Dunbar, Borough of Old Forge, designates the certain parcel of land within the borough located at the ends of Forge Street and Howard Street, containing approximately 23 acres of land, more particularly described on Exhibit A attached here, too, as blighted within the Borough of Old Forge in accordance with the meaning of and as such as is a deteriorated property as defined under LURDA. Number two, the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners grants a tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of the LURDA Act and provides for tax exemption of the assessment attributable to the new actual cost of new construction or improvements for a period of 10 years, beginning on January 1 of the year following the year in which the borough issues an occupancy permit for the improvement of the first structure on the property, not to exceed 10 years. The same shall be exempt from real property taxes otherwise payable to Lackawanna County as a result of an increase in the tax assessment for the property attributed to the cost of future improvements, construction, thereon, as follows. Year one is 100% real estate tax exemption on new construction or improvements. Year two is also 100%. Year three is 90%. Year four is 90%. Year five is 80%. Year six is 80%. Year seven is 70%. Year eight is 70%. Year nine is 60%. And finally, year 10 is 50% real estate tax exemption on new construction and/or improvement. Duly enacted this 19th day of November, 2025, at its regularly scheduled meeting. Madam Chairman, we're here to speak upon that is Attorney Fred Rinaldi.
Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Just a... What is Holly Ridge Estates? It's a multi-phase, multi-family project located in the Borough of Old Forge that aims to transform an approximate 23 and 1/2-acre site, known as Holly Ridge, into a modern and sustainable residential community. This site, formerly used for coal mining activities since the 1800s, was the location of the Morgan Breaker. It succumbed to fire in the late 1960s and was not fully demolished until the early 1970s. This property has remained idle since that time. This project will consist a mix of townhomes and apartments designed to cater to a carefree lifestyle. The first phase includes both townhomes and apartments. The entire development is anticipated to be constructed in eight phases, with each phase taking about eight months to complete. The total development will require a multimillion-dollar investment from the developer, George Dunbar, for site work, infrastructure, and construction of each phase. Overall, the proposed multi-phase, multi-family project in the Borough of Old Forge aims to provide a sustainable and modern residential community. With Lackawanna County's support for this LURDA approval, this project will not only significantly contribute to the economic revitalization of the area while providing much-needed housing, but also contribute to the economic revitalization of Lackawanna County. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second. On the question?
On the question, after careful consideration, I will be voting no on the proposed LURDA for the Holly Ridge Estates project in Old Forge. My position is based on longstanding county precedent. And the precedent has been that both the borough and the school district must approve a LURDA before it comes before the county for consideration. In this case, while the Borough of Old Forge has approved the request, the Old Forge School District has not. This precedent is not new. In fact, when the same issue was raised last year, the county's former solicitor, now General Counsel Don Frederickson, excuse me, advised that moving forward without school district approval would set a troubling precedent, and it was not in the best interest of the county. And I want to reference a letter that was sent to Holly Ridge's legal counsel, Michael Gallagher, from Attorney Frederickson on June 25, 2024. In the letter, Attorney Frederickson says, "I have been asked to respond to your correspondence of June 18, 2024, regarding the above referenced matter, the LURDA for Holly Ridge Estates. In your correspondence, you indicate that your client, Holly Ridge Estates, is seeking a local economic development tax assistance exemption for its property in Old Forge. It should be noted that under the LURDA legislation, the designation of a LURDA property lies solely at the discretion of the local municipality, and there is no mandatory entitlement to an exemption. Each application must be reviewed on its own merit, which we know. In the instant matter, it is noted that your client did submit an application for a LURDA exemption on the property in question. We have identified a number of impediments which hinder the county from granting approval to your client's application. Of note are the following issues. Number one, at the present time, the property has a tax increment financing designation, which was approved by the county in 2010. As the property has a designated county TIF, it is ineligible for a county LURDA exemption. I don't know if that has been since resolved. Number two, it has been longstanding county policy to only grant tax exemptions to properties which have been previously approved by the local municipality and the local school district. In the instant matter, the Old Forge School District has denied your client's LURDA request. Your client is involved in litigation regarding the redevelopment authorities' TIF designation for this property. This matter should be resolved before any request for a LURDA is given consideration. I don't know if that has been resolved. No one updated me on that. So, based on that legal guidance that we got back in 2024, as the chairman at the time, I did not place the LURDA on the agenda. And nothing has changed that would justify abandoning... and nothing has changed that would justify abandoning that standard now, in my opinion. Additionally, my concerns are heightened by the fact that I believe the Old Forge School District is currently engaged in litigation related to this LURDA request. I'm not privy to the details of that legal dispute, but its existence alone, for me, raises significant questions and underscores the need for caution on this matter. Until those matters are resolved and until the school district, which stands to shoulder the most direct financial implications, gives its formal support, I believe that it would be irresponsible for the county to proceed. Economic development tools like LURDA can be valuable when used correctly, fairly, and consistently, but I believe we must apply them with transparency and respect for all the taxing bodies, especially our public schools, which rely, excuse me, rely on stable revenue to educate our children. So for those reasons, I will be voting no, and I cannot support the LURDA request at this time.
On the question as well, so Attorney Rinaldi, so what's, do you have an idea of the total value of that, or the cost of that total project?
It could be up to a hundred million dollar investment that Mr. Dunbar is making, you know, not only to Old Forge Borough, but also Lackawanna County. And just from a perspective of the tenants that are moving into his other projects and this project, they're from outside Lackawanna County, so they are relocating from out of state and out of the area to move here and enjoy Lackawanna County, what it has to offer with respect to employment in the community and also the surrounding areas.
Yeah. Well, and I know, you know, Birchwood Estates is another high-end property that he's done. I really don't know what the total was there. It was in millions and millions and millions of dollars. I mean, it's a beautiful part for Old Forge. When you're there, you don't feel like you're even in Pennsylvania, let alone in downtown Old Forge. You know, and anyone that would come to the municipality and ask for LURDAs, especially when you're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars, I think certainly would be entertained. As far as economic development, you know, that's, it's a key thing for not only Lackawanna County, but for Old Forge as well, for the businesses there and for everything else that, you know, that these people will be involved with in the community. I know that Guy Singer has a lot of doctors there. I mean, there's a lot of professional people in these places. And, you know, the project is underway, and what he's done so far to that vacant scarred land is unbelievable. It's just a beautiful place. And then the other part of it too is, you know, Old Forge did approve it. This is something that we've been looking at for a couple of years. And, you know, it's up to the school district, and typically, we like to have everyone on board, but our decision has nothing to do with the school district. They will get their taxes, so it's not like we're making a call, then they won't get their tax revenue, but they will. So it really has no effect on them. But it's just a little bit of a, a little extra bonus for the developer to be able to continue and to make the improvements there that he's looking to do. You know, the costs are out of control. And I think it's very important that we take a good, hard look at this and give him the opportunity to get a little bit of a break so he can complete the project, and it's just going to be a benefit to everyone in the region, new people coming in. So, you know, I've been trying to get this done for a long time. I know there's been a lot of bumps and things in the last couple of years, but, you know, I think we can work, we've been working through all that. And again, this really has no bearing on the school district, so they will get their tax money. And as far as the borough, I know that Mr. Dunbar and his other properties that he has, he does all his own plowing, his own road maintenance, his own garbage. He doesn't rely on the borough to do that for him. So, there's not much of a, there's not much of a burden on the borough other than that they have a lot of good people coming into town.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Yes, I echo Commissioner Schermack's sentiments, you know, and I applaud Mr. Dunbar for taking land that would not have been developed and revitalizing it into such a wonderful project. And Attorney Frederickson, maybe you can address some of the comments or statements that Commissioner Gahn had related to, I believe it was a twenty-four letter that you had written?
Twenty-twenty-four, I believe.
Yes.
Twenty-twenty-eight, Commissioner. There's not a LURDA to prohibit you from adopting the LURDA for this development. Each municipality or the school district or borough has their own right to say yes or no. So, you have the right to do so. I would just point out that under the LURDA, it will commence January of two thousand and twenty-six and will run ten years through two thousand and thirty-five. Because I know the development has already started, but they will not be retroactive, so there will be no refunds granted from taxpayer money, but...
Correct. I know we worked on that together, so...
Yeah, going forward.
Very good. Again, I think this is what LURDA is about, and for the county to be able to help continue to move this great project forward, I'm in favor. So, I guess I would be the second. I know you're opposed, but the eyes have it. Did you vote yes?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion is approved.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two... Commissioner, can we vote? Again?
Sure, okay, we can vote again.
If we could just have a vote.
Yes, okay. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Yep.
No.
Second, on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Just on the question, I just want to make sure, I don't know where the attorney went. I'm not, I just want to make it clear that I am not saying that this is not a good project. Anytime there's economic development in the county, that's great. But I was just referencing the letter, and the reason why I didn't put it on the agenda was because there was these issues that were identified and the past precedents. So I just want to make it clear to everybody, I have nothing against this project. It's great that they're doing this, but the reason I'm voting no is simply because of the letter that I cited and the things that I just stated. Thank you.
So Commissioner Gahn, you're no?
No.
Commissioner Schermack?
Yep.
And just to follow up with regard to the letter, I believe the TIF has been withdrawn. And the litigation is going to be withdrawn once this is adopted by the county. And the only other issue, of course, is the school district hasn't approved. They still haven't approved, but that's, again, that's their decision to make on the...
It's their right based on the law, correct?
That is correct, yeah. We can compel them, and they can compel us, and it's up to them to make their own decisions.
Okay, okay. So Commissioner Schermack, you're yes, I am a yes. Eyes have it. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-eight-eight.
Entering into intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Solicitor's Office, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Lackawanna County Solicitor's Office and the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. It's a five-year agreement to take effect October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and expires September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioner is here to speak upon that is our Director of Domestic Relations, Ms. Catt.
Good morning. The purpose of this agreement is to maintain and improve the effectiveness of the Title IV D Child Support Program and the services provided by the Domestic Relations Section. The Solicitor shall provide guidance and professional advice regarding questions of legal policy and/or procedure to the Director of Lackawanna County DRS. The role of the Solicitor is to represent the interests of domestic relations and remain impartial to the parties who appear before the DRS. The cost for the Solicitors is a part of the cost allocation plan, and this approval allows us to receive, Lackawanna County to receive sixty-six percent reimbursement for any services rendered to domestic relations.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is approved. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-eight-nine.
Entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Sheriff's Office, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with the Office of the Sheriff of Lackawanna County and the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. It's a five-year agreement to take effect October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and expires September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Once again, Commissioners, here is Director Hardaway.
Once again, the purpose of this agreement is to maintain and improve the effectiveness of the Child Support Program within Lackawanna County. We have an agreement with the Sheriff's Department where they have two deputies that routinely go out, I'm going to say, three to four days a week to serve bench warrants. And they conduct diligent searches using available resources, including electronic sources, to locate absent non-custodial parents and receive and return communication from non-custodial parents. Also, the deputies serve domestic relation warrants by Lackawanna County Court of Common Pleas. The assigned deputies also, required by law and directed by the Court of Common Pleas, provide service of process. Sometimes we have difficulty delivering our court orders, and they will hand-deliver them to places of employment or other places where we might find the non-custodial parent. And also, the assigned deputies shall post photographs, demographic information of non-custodial parents with active bench warrants on the sheriff's page of the county website, as well as other social media and available electronic platforms. I say that because we do have a hotline, and if someone happens to see someone on the website, they will call us from time to time and say, "The non-custodial parent is here," and we usually go pick him up, he or she, I should say. But I will tell you, I'm very active statewide with the Domestic Relations Association of Pennsylvania, and many DRS directors say they don't have these type of agreements, meaning it is difficult for sheriff's departments around the state to maintain deputies. And we are fortunate that this agreement allows two deputies to serve our warrants. Now, when they're needed by the sheriff's department, they work for the sheriff's department. But I say, three to four times a week, they go and serve our warrants, and it has worked out well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is approved. Thank you. Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-nine-one.
Nine-zero, I think.
Or zero-nine-zero. Sorry, Kathy, I didn't realize you were up there for a little while.
You jumped over me. That's okay.
Entering into an intergovernmental cooperative agreements, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into an intergovernmental cooperative agreement with Catherine Carum Esquire as the Lackawanna County Employed Hearing Officer, Mr. Chester Bestricky Esquire, Lackawanna County Employed Hearing Officer, and Joseph T. Healy Esquire as the paternity and support matters. And the Domestic Relations Section of the Court of Common Pleas. These are five-year agreements to take effect October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and they expire on September thirtieth, two thousand and thirty. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Finally, once again, here is Director Hardaway.
Thank you. There are two attorneys in family court, Katie Carum and Chester Bestricky. They provide what we call de novo hearing services for domestic relations. A little bit in the weeds, we're a three-tier county, so you come to domestic relations and have a conference for your child support or spousal support, and if you want to appeal what is done in domestic relations, you go to a hearing officer. So you would see Katie, or you would see Chet. And if you feel that they've made a mistake in what they've done, you can go before a judge and file exceptions. And so that's how they're used within domestic relations, and it works out well. And I say de novo because when they look at a case, they look at it with fresh eyes. I tell people in our office, no one is ever happy because when you come in the door, you're already talking about a broken relationship, you're talking about children, and you're talking about money. If we put religion in there, you can have all the baddie. But what happens then is child support order is entered, and those that are paying feel they pay too much, those that are receiving say they don't get enough. So many times, they do go to Katie or Chet for appeals, and that's what we use those services for. On the other hand, we have Jody Healy, who works as the Title IV D attorney. And so Jody is called upon to work on behalf of custodial parents, the plaintiffs. When they go to the de novo hearings, it is, pro se is difficult at times in the courtroom, so Jody many times helps the plaintiffs, custodial parents, with that process.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is approved. Thank you. Now we're moving on, twenty-five zero-two-nine-one.
These are ratifying agreements for snow plowing. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby retroactively approve and enter into agreements to commence it November first, two thousand and twenty-five, and expire October thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six for snow plowing on the county roadways during inclement weather with the following independent organizations. Bear Owens Paving in Peckville, F&amp;T Excavating in Peckville, S&amp;S Plowing and Taylor, and T-Brian Heavy Equipment in fellow township. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Commissioners, this is due to the fact of depletion in our staff up at roads and bridges that we are working on to fulfill and get them filled back up again. But until we get them filled to capacity, we will have to use outside contractors to help plow our roads during the winter. Thank you.
Yep, and to add to that, if there's anybody out there with a CDL, a commercial driver's license, we're looking for some folks. It's a great place to be. The equipment's nice, the facility is nice. So if there's anybody out there, we'll be glad to hear from you.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is approved. Resolution twenty-five dash zero-two-nine-two.
Entering into a film clip license agreement, be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a film clip license agreement with Munka Films LLC for the feature documentary production currently entitled "Unentitled Documentary About the Trouble with Cali Movie", in all edits, lifts, and versions thereof, and the advertising and promotion thereof. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on November nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Here to speak upon that is our General Counsel, Mr. Donald Frederickson.
Thank you, Commissioners. Back in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, a monumental film was produced and filmed here in Lackawanna County called "The Trouble with Cali". After some litigation wrangling, the county did finally receive copies of the movie, which we possess one copy of, and the other two we distributed to the library and to the Historic Society for future endeavors. However, we were recently contacted this year by a documentary filmmaker who is making a movie, a documentary, about the making of "The Trouble with Cali" here in Lackawanna County. And is what he is requesting from us is permission to use clips, ten, five to ten minutes of clips from the movie to be shown in the documentary. And the contract today is going to allow us to authorize him to do that going forward. The hope is...
Yeah, with hopes.
The hope is that this may generate some interest in the movie, which may result in a larger contract, maybe like what a Netflix or a Paramount or something, who may want to show the movie on streaming or something of that nature.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
Motion.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, when this came up, we were all laughing when Don said monumental film because I had the opportunity when this whole thing came to be, was it a couple of months ago now? I can't even remember. Right. When this documentary filmmaker came forward, came forward and met with us, I had never seen the film before, although I've heard a lot about it. So I sat down and I watched the film. I'm not a film buff, but this is the worst film, the worst movie. It has to be the worst in the history of movies in the world. But it's so bad that it's funny. And I laughed, and I think, I know Don watched it and a couple of us watched it. It is so bad that it's funny. So apparently, this documentary filmmaker wants to make a documentary about how bad it is in the hopes that it will become viral and take off. And if it does, which I think we're all praying for, we will receive money for it. So, I mean, that's, that's good for us, so...
And they can piggyback off the TV show, The Office, so... That's a cult classic as well, and it brings people here, so who knows?
I've had the undistinct pleasure of watching the movie twice. The more you watch it, the funnier it gets. It's kind of like a Monty Python-type situation. It's so bad that it's funny.
Well, hopefully, it'll generate some revenue for us. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it, motion is approved. Thank you. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Good evening, good afternoon. Ralph Antonorme, Madison Township, I represent a big family of brothers and sisters, they're all seniors, and I'm here to support my friend there, Commissioner Schermack, okay? And I read the papers, I see all this controversy going on. I'll tell you what. Like the Indians said... I'll tell you what, like the Indians said, Mr. Gahn, talk much, talk much. You don't like what he says, he don't like what you say. You like third graders or fourth graders, right? But it's all right what you say, but it's not good for what he says. I think it should be neutral. And what you spoke on before, I don't see how some of them things you're talking about is going to help me up there in the woods. I don't see what's going to do anything for me for over two thousand bucks a year for county taxes. For what? I don't see it. I said, and you should have raised it six percent instead of thirty-three. You're saying the future, the future. I don't know how long I'm going to be here in the future, but I hope to see it, I hope to see it because I don't think it's exactly right. First of all, you blame the last administration, it's like blaming the snowman if it snows too much. Why don't you blame everybody? You got too many programs here. You got a lot of them that don't benefit me, some of them might, but they don't benefit me and mine and the senior citizens that I'm representing. I'm one of the younger ones there. Hell, I'm eighty-six years old today. Is anybody here that old, still working? Do you know what hard times are? Do you know what depression is? Some of this stuff, you need to sharpen your pencil, okay? You got too many programs, too much money spent. But like the Indians said, talk much. But it don't do nothing for me. I read the papers, I see what's going on. Now, I said, "It's my birthday today. How about giving me a birthday present? Give me my taxes back." Because the worst mistake was when Mr. Fat O'Malley got this building that we didn't need. Everything's been downhill since. I don't know how you're going to correct everything. Some things you said might be fine, but the earlier speech, it don't represent, it don't do nothing for me and mine. It don't do nothing. We have nothing up there in Madisonville to start with. What's it do for me? If you're raising the taxes, all you're doing is killing the old people, my wife is ill. Lot of people my age and older. Where are they going to get the money? Where are we going to go? Everybody don't have a pension or money in the bank. Hell, I put my house there, I built it all. Now they come along with this committee there, reassessment, it's worth a half a million dollars. What is worth a half a million dollars? I don't want it to be worth a million dollars. It's not worth it to me. I'm living in it. My family's there. That's it. Do you really know what life is about, where we came from? My father came from the old country, fought in the war, got all shot up, Purple Heart and everything, raised a big family like a lot of them, worked in the mines like animals, even some of the older brothers. Where are we going with this taxes? You're saying it's going to be good in the future. I'm not going to be here to watch the future. I'm living for now. What are you going to do for me? I'd like to have a rebate. So I don't want to waste your time here, you know, but I don't want to act like a fool. I'm only wearing the glasses because my eye is bad. I don't, I don't want to be rude. Because I could be rude, I could be nasty, I could be pleasant, but I don't like what I'm hearing. Thank you very much. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Happy birthday.
I don't know your friend, I just know your family. Good luck.
Thank you.
Joan Hodouanet Scranton. First, I have a question. Who, if anyone, replaced Pat McKenna? No one?
No.
Is there, is there someone going to come in to fill his role?
Well, right now, we're covered. We have, we have a couple people doing the job.
Okay. I saw on the county's website that the Board of Elections has a meeting scheduled for Friday at nine forty-five AM to certify the election results. Has a date been set to swear in? Tom Welby is the next commissioner?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I hope that'll be coming soon after Friday's meeting and put it in the legal so that we all know. Now, on a separate issue, I don't own property, but I do pay the property tax for a close relative. I've been paying on that property since nineteen ninety-nine. I guess it's twenty-five, going to be twenty-six years. And, but I, I'm not in the position, obviously, to appeal a reassessment. But it occurs to me, I was talking to a friend of mine, and he said to me, "Why doesn't Lackawanna County have the GIS map information accessible through its website when other counties do?" Apparently, this GIS map information from that website could be a valuable tool for any of the residents who are looking to appeal their reassessment. It is a very practical way to compare properties, to get information on dimensions, whole lot of things. It's not free, nothing is free. But I think that if we're going, we have certified the reassessment, correct? We're going forward with the reassessment into 2026. I think it's incumbent upon the county to assist the taxpayers in every, any way that they can, who do wish to appeal their reassessment and not make it hard for them. So if the other counties have this information accessible through their website, can you look into doing it for Lackawanna County? Thank you.
Joan, we are working on that and there's an update coming in March, so I'll keep you updated, all right?
If it weren't for Brian Jeffers, there'd be no progress made in this county.
I'm not, I couldn't technically do it, all right? But somebody is working on it.
Thank you.
Good morning. I got a couple questions that have been puzzling me for a while and I'd like to try to get it addressed. First of all...
Could you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, my name's David Santamaro and I'm from Scott Township.
Thank you.
This first question is for you. I don't understand why we even had an election four days before the vote for the new guy coming in. I got, my first question is to you, and I don't want you to take this wrong or anything, but I just want to get it off my chest. How can you come in as a temporary and take over a guy that I had voted for in the first place to be the chairman? Can you answer that question for me, please?
Let me continue.
For you.
I have no comments at this time.
I knew you were going to say that. This next question is for Mr. Schirmack. I've been trying to get a hold of your office for a couple months. I wanted to ask you a couple things and I can never get through to you. Is that the way you do business with taxpayers?
I get phone calls every day, so I didn't get, I have not had a message from you given to me.
Oh, yes, you have. I've got proof of it on my phone, but I'm not going to get into it. I just want to know how somebody can come in and, and I'm not getting my answer, my question answered by Ms. Sacco. I don't see how somebody can come in on a temporary basis and take over a commissioner that the Lackawanna County people had voted in. And to me, that's wrong. So my next question is, when Tom Welby comes in, who's going to be the head of the Commissioners then?
We'll have to see when Tom gets here, what his thoughts are. We will do a reorganization like we do every year and that's a decision of the Commissioners.
Now, let me ask you a personal question, if you don't mind.
Lay it on me.
If you were, and I'm not sticking up for Bill or anybody, and I'm just, this is just me. I'm old school and I'm trying to get through something here. If you were the head of the Commission, say you won it first before Bill, and somebody came in and wanted to take your spot, and that person took over your spot, what would your thoughts be on that?
Same as they were when I was, would have loved to have been Chairman many times since my first administration. So I was not picked, I was not voted for. And if I was somehow voted in and then all of a sudden I was voted back out, that's just the way it goes.
Okay. Now, one more, another question. When, before you guys do some voting on budgets and stuff like that, why can't the taxpayers come in and hold a meeting with you people and so we can give you our opinions on what's, you know, what we think? But I've never seen that happen in the last, oh, fifty years or so?
We have, every year, before the budget is even finalized, we have multiple meetings. Was it four meetings, I believe, public meetings with copies of the preliminary budget for everyone to look, plus it's online? And you have opportunities to come in, there's a couple at night, there's a couple during the day, they're in different municipalities. So everybody has the opportunity, every single year, we do it the same way every, every year, and it gives you the opportunity to comment, question, or anything else with the budget.
Okay, I didn't know about that. Like I said, I would like to sit down and meet with you in your office one day?
Leave your number with our Chief of Staff, I'll be happy to meet with you.
Who's your Chief of Staff?
Brian Jeffers.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
My name is Allison Williams, William Clark Summit, and I thank you for taking time to hear what I have to say today. I was a candidate for the HR Director job here in Lackawanna County and I just want to bring you through the process of what I had to go through with this job. I was called for an interview and that interview was set up. The morning of that interview, it was canceled because one of the Commissioners was sick. I asked at that point, "Are we still interviewing for this job? Are we still hiring for this job?" I was told, "Yes, we want to interview you. Just hang in there, we'll get back in touch with you." I called back subsequently three separate times to make sure that we're still hiring for this job and I was told there was a hiring freeze, there was the government shutdown, and then there was an election. But hang in there, all three separate times, hang in there. We are hiring for this job and we definitely want to interview you. I found out, I'm sure like everyone else did, through the paper, that one person was interviewed and that one person was picked. My concern with that is, if you're looking for the most highly qualified candidate, it is not to pick one person, look at resume and interview that person. It is to pick, as we found out, thirty candidates that had applied for a job. Me being one of them, and I'm only speaking for myself and this is only my opinion, so please remember that, this is my opinion. You would take, at the very least, seven or eight candidates and then you would interview them face to face. I feel that this is irresponsible, as well as a little shady, again, my opinion. And since I wasn't afforded the opportunity for an interview, I'm just going to give you a little bit of my background, okay? I worked for a multi-billion dollar worldwide corporation for thirty-two years. Yes, I'm old. Under my belt with that, I have fifteen years of HR experience. I've been through multiple transformations with HR, as well as four years of labor relations. I have been involved in two separate negotiations. I deal with panels on a monthly basis, as well as arbitrations. And again, I wish that I was given the opportunity for an interview. I'm not saying that I'm the best candidate. I don't even know the candidate that you picked. I'm not saying that I'm any better. I would have liked to have had the opportunity to sit in front of you and given you my resume, knowing that I may have been able to hit it out of the park, as well as some of the other twenty-nine candidates with me. Thank you again for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioners, other business? Commissioner Gahn?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple of comments. First, I just want to talk for a minute about Mayor Dave Wenzel, who passed away on November fifth. He was the former Scranton Mayor and I knew him very well. He passed away on November fifth and that was the date of our last Commissioners' meeting, coincidentally, where Joan Hodouanet spoke of the inaugural Public Service Award Ceremony that was going to be bestowed and was bestowed on the mayor by the Center for Ethics and Excellence in Public Service, being held at the University of Scranton that same evening. The university is going to continue to present the award annually and will be, it will be known as the David J. Wenzel Public Service Award. As has been reported, and anybody who has known Mayor Wenzel, he championed accessibility by implementing curb cuts and ramps and enforcing disabled space parking laws. He also led environmental efforts that earned the city of Scranton its first Tree City USA designation. He also co-taught the Vietnam Experience at the University of Scranton. And I mean, I'm not even doing his resume justice for all that he did for our community, but it's a huge loss. I know all of the outpouring of support over the last few weeks, but just wanted to publicly send out our thoughts and our prayers to his family, his wife Janet, and the entire Wenzel clan. Veterans Day was on November eleventh. I had the opportunity to attend the Veterans Day Ceremony on Courthouse Square, beautiful ceremony. In concert with that, it was recently announced that the county is partnering with the city for the Vietnam War Memorial Wall. That's going to be, it's a traveling monument that's going to be located up at Naug Park, October second and October fourth, 2026. So it's next year. I had the opportunity to see this the last time it was in town, I think back in 2011. And it really is an unbelievable monument and there was a ton of people that went up to Naug Park the last time it was there. And we're thrilled that we're going to partner with the city to bring it back here again. I also had the opportunity to tour the Fidelity Bank's corporate headquarters renovations in downtown Scranton at the historic Scranton Electric Building. We were there last year when they started the work and then to see the progress that they've made is unbelievable. So I just want to congratulate them on their commitment to innovation, their community partnership, and economic development here in Lackawanna County and northeastern Pennsylvania. Dan Santinello, who's the President and CEO, gave a really great speech and reflected on the bank's legacy, but more so the significance of restoring the former Scranton Electric Building as a symbol of progress, not just for the city of Scranton, but for the county and our region as a whole. Lackawanna County Office of Youth and Family Services, together with the Lackawanna County Court, is going to be celebrating National Adoption Month. This past Monday, November seventeenth, there was a lot going on in this building. Ceremonies were held here at the Government Center where ten children found permanency with their forever family. I wasn't able to attend the specific adoption ceremonies, but I was in one last year and I wasn't quite sure what I was walking into, but it was one of, if not the, most moving thing that I've ever seen in my entire life. And again, just want to stress the importance of what these people in our OIFs agency do on a daily basis. They do a great job. This Saturday, November twenty-second, beginning at nine fifteen AM, this year's Santa Parade will be held in downtown Scranton. The parade concludes at twelve noon on Courthouse Square. And I just wanted to let everybody know, and you probably maybe saw it on the news or when you were walking in here today, the windows in front of the building are now decorated for Christmas. We have new windows as part of an energy savings project, so you'll notice the lobby has been redone, the entrance to the building. And I have to thank Tracy Hart, our Deputy Chief of Staff, and Erica Nealan for all the work that they put in and making the front of the building look really, really good. We also have new Christmas decorations that we're, are going to be going up on Courthouse Square. And Jeff DeAngelo is the artist from South Scranton who designed the front windows and he did an amazing job. So we're just trying to bring a little bit of Christmas spirit back to downtown Scranton. With all the work that John Bassalig has done to bring this block of Wyoming Avenue back, this, we thought, was a great addition for families and children who are coming to downtown Scranton. And I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and hope you enjoy it with your family. Thank you.
Commissioner Schirmack?
I'll expand on, well, I won't expand, but anyway, I'll comment on the building. It does look nice. The windows, the decorations in the windows, it almost brings back memories of the old Globe stores. So it does look really nice. So if anybody hasn't seen it, stop and take a look. And I just want to acknowledge, too, the people that come up, our directors that come up and speak here. There's always a mix depending on what's on the agenda. But, you know, today we had Kim, Kathy, Sarah, Joe Weschler. You know, it just shows you the talent that we have here and the hard work that gets done here. And, you know, we have dedicated, dedicated people that do a great job, very difficult jobs. You know, Sarah, Sarah walked in with area and aging, and she had to fill shoes of Jason Cavulic. Jason Cavulic was so good, the governor stole him from us. So, you know, but Sarah took the ball and ran and just does a great job. But I just want to thank all our, our folks that helped us. Kathy, you're still here, so thank you. I know, I know our marine left, Jim Casella. Want to thank him again for coming, thank him for his service. Ralph, thank you for your service as well, happy birthday. And then last week was, it was November eleventh, was not only Veterans Day, but it was also the two-hundred-and-fiftieth birthday of the United States Marine Corps. So I was with Jim that night for the ceremony and celebration at the Marine Corps League. So that was always nice. I try to go every year for their birthday celebration. But thanks again to all our service members and everyone that is serving, and our veterans, thank you, every, thank you for your service. Again, the parade, nine fifteen on Saturday. Hope everyone, hope the weather's good, I hope to see everyone there. It's always a fun time, and happy Thanksgiving, have a safe holiday, everyone.
Thank you. Even though it has been a short period of time, and I should have been seated nine months ago, I am honored to have served the people of Lackawanna County. In my time in the seat, we looked to right some of the wrongs of the reassessment process so that it was fair and equitable. And if I were seated earlier, we may have had an opportunity to get proper assessment notices out to our residents. We look for revenue and/or saving opportunities in the twenty-twenty-six budget, such as payment in lieu of tax opportunities with our eds and meds that have now been sought after since two thousand and fifteen, and look for savings related to professional services contracts, such as legal and consultants. Again, it was an honor to serve, and I would like to wish everyone a healthy and happy holiday season. And I encourage you to get out to the Santa Parade on Saturday. Thank you. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion. Second.
Thank you. We need to adjourn.